For Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Do you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The agenda for this evening's meeting is different because we have no, nothing on the agenda.
No entitlement cases that would require a public hearing.
Yeah, so we have, will have no public hearing. There's no need to swear, swear anyone in. So our first item of business will be to approval of the minutes of the May 11th 22 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Lavoy.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Next item, open forum. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right to our new business, which tonight is Commissioner Training. So we'll, just a quick review here. We'll, we'll cover six different areas. Joe will for us. Variations, special use permits, comprehensive plan amendments, text amendments, preliminary plans or Platts, and planned developments.
Do you want Joe to skip ahead and give the update first?
Yes, and before we start the training, if you would cover, cover this general update of the Willowcrest Golf Course redevelopment that you were going to cover at the end of the meeting, let's do that now.
Okay. Staff, staff just wanted to update the commission because obviously this, the step one process, which was the comprehensive plan amendment, conceptual preliminary plat, and then a concept plan amendment came through here a few months ago. And then it was, it was scheduled for the village board, and then it was continued while the petitioner tried to work out some language with the adjacent homeowners. So staff just wanted to let you know what that update was. So the, the board did finally hear that at their last meeting, and they concurred with your recommendations. So if you remember, you gave positive recommendations to the plat, or basically defining what the area is, and you gave a positive recommendation to that this area can be removed from the concept plan, which encompassed the hotel and the golf course. However, you gave a negative recommendation on the comp plan amendment, and there was a lot of discussion that there was a, the general consensus was it was the single family attached, which was not well received, and there was a general indication that the preference was for a single family detached. The board felt the same way and gave a unanimous no vote on the comprehensive plan amendment. So we are waiting to find out from the petitioner. I do think that they will go forward. That's my personal opinion. If they choose to go forward, the earliest, and that's assuming that they make an application on Friday, Friday is one of my application deadlines, the earliest they could be back before us would be in August. And that's assuming that we don't have multiple rounds of review, and this is a complex project. I perceive there will be multiple rounds of review, but the earliest, if it is to come back before us, would be in August. So I apologize if, if that's not enough information, but that's all the information I have at this point.
That's fine. We appreciate the update. And is it okay if we contact you on Friday to see if there was a submission or on Monday?
I'd recommend Monday because they can always rush something in at the last moment, or it can sometimes be a partial submittal that we refuse because it's partial. So usually on Monday, we digest what, what comes into us for any project, and then we make a determination, is it, is it complete enough to move forward, or do we basically kick it back and say, you didn't give us enough? So I'm not 100% confident they're ready to move forward by this Friday, but you're welcome to contact me on, on Monday, and I can let you know if the application was made.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Then Joe, if, if it isn't this Friday, does that mean it goes, it would be the earliest, would be September's meeting then?
Typically, so we run on a monthly cycle because we meet once a month here, and usually my application deadline is the, the same Friday that we meet. So we'd meet in July, I think we meet on July 13th.
Yes.
So that would be, my next deadline is typically July 15th, and that puts them out two months from July, so Sept- uh, August, September, so.
Okay, thanks.
And that, that assumes one round of reviews to stay on that schedule, and this will likely have two or three rounds of reviews, so.
Are you, are you saying that you think that they will be back?
I've got no indication that they're not going to try to retool the project to meet the single family detached, which was what the board had indicated would be more likely supported.
But with knowing that, knowing-
Basically, they're, they're looking at removing the townhouses from their proposed project.
Okay.
Okay. Well, there you have it, folks.
Thank you so much for moving it up front.
So is this to me for trainings, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First off, I want to thank everyone for coming. If you remember, a few months ago, we asked about how best to tackle trainings, and we thought about a Saturday session or other night sessions, and we figured because there was nothing on the agenda for tonight formally, that we would take advantage of the fact that people usually clear their schedules on Thursday nights, or on a Wednesday night for us, to go through some things. And because we do have two new commissioners, we're kind of going back to basics, so I apologize for my seasoned commissioners if this is all repetitive. But sometimes knowing the basics, we forget those, and knowing the basics will guide you if, if you support a project or have issues with a project as to how to craft your support or objection to. So, and I know that a lot of stuff in my, my staff reports is glossed over, and that's okay. But we usually try to put some of these standards in the staff reports just so that we're constantly reminding you. We're going to go through them a little bit more in detail. We have a couple examples, pretty simple examples. This is like an open dialogue, so we can, we can discuss as much as we want, we can go as late as we want, or we can go as early as we want, so. So I gave you a pretty simple, three-page, and basically all I took, did was I took the code. So if you remember, for site development plan, planned approvals, I took the code and we went through it. So I'm first going to go through, the first one on my list is variations. This is very common for us to get a variation request. And then we're going to go through an example. We're going to talk about it a little bit, then we'll move on to special uses. I have an example for special uses as well. I don't have examples for some of the other ones, but we can discuss them as much as we need to, so. Variations, and, and I had the luxury of working in Hawaii, and I think of all the places I've worked, they handled it best. They said, they, they led with the, the statement that said variations are very difficult to get. And the intent of that is that if you have a well-developed code that accommodates everything you need to, then variations should be few and far between, because variations really exist for anomalies. I have a lot that is unique. And in general, there are very few lots that should be unique in your community. Westmont grew up differently. We kind of expanded our borders. We've inherited a lot of land that was in the county where there weren't a lot of regulations, or there, the regulations were very different than what we had. So we have a few more of those unique properties. But in general, a variation is a request for exception from the rules, and the more we grant exception, the lesser impact the rules have. So we always list what the standards for variations are. The standards for variations are what translates to the findings of fact. So if you remember, our attorney always produces the findings of fact in advance of the meetings that we, we look at, and basically it is justifications to the, the standards that need to be met in order to grant a variation or a variance. And those, I'm going to really paraphrase a lot of what's here, but we can always elaborate if you need to. So the planning and zoning commission shall not recommend a variation to the regulations unless these three findings of fact can be made. So it's not one of the three, it's all of them. So they, there are conditions that need to be met in order to approve the variance. And the first is that the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations. So I will give my layman's translation of that, and I'm sure John can do it much more eloquently than I can, but basically, can you use your property in the zoning district for what it was intended? So if it's zoned single family, can you have a single family residence? And can you typically use your single family residence like everyone else can with their single family residential lots? Or is there some constraint on that lot that makes you not able to use it as everyone else is? Is that close to a good explanation?
Sure.
Okay. So basically, is your lot so unique you can't even build on it? You can't build your house because it's too pie-shaped and it's, it's too small? Well, that could be warranted for a variance because you are unique, because you, you don't fit the norm. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. You're hearing me say "unique" a lot tonight, and I apologize in advance. So basically, your lot makes you different than everyone else, and because you are different than everyone else, you should have an exception to the rules, because the rules were written for everyone else, they weren't written for you. And obviously, there are degrees of requests. You know, we have setbacks. Is this, if it's a 35-foot setback and you're asking for 32, is that a reasonable request? If it's a 35-foot setback and you're asking for a two-foot setback, that might be unreasonable. So that is for you to judge when you're looking at these before us. And obviously, the more unique the lot, the more extreme the request may be. And then third, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So will it seem out of place for the neighborhood, or will it seem pretty normal and typical? So is, is, is the granting of the variance changing the dynamic? We see lots of variances on, on Cass Avenue and 63rd and Ogden for, you know, front yard setbacks for parking. And when you look at all the other adjacent properties, well, is parking already close to the street? Is it typical to see that? So you'll see a lot of those justifications for, well, what, what do I see left and right of me? What do I see down the street? I'm matching what everyone else is doing. So you're, you're typically see that as a typical justification. And then those three items, as you're considering them for your decision, there are ways to consider them. And so that's what number two is on here. It says, here are the things that the planning commission shall also, in addition to making its recommendations, show that there are practical difficulties or practical hardships, take into consideration these items. And that looks into physical surroundings, features of the specific property involved that would result, result in a particular hardship upon the owner. Is it a sloped site? Is it hard to build on it because there might be an unbuildable area because the topography creates a slope condition? That's kind of what, an example there. B would be the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. So we're right back to that unique condition. So I am different than everyone else in my zoning district. The purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to make more money out of the property. So basically, it's a monetary component. So if someone comes before you and says, well, it's just going to cost me too much money to follow the codes. Well, technically, costing too much money is just like it is making more money. It is a monetary consideration. So it's not really something that you should take into consideration, that it costs a bit more. Now, I'm sure that you can look at the individual request before you and determine what's reasonable in your own, in your own minds, but in general, you don't want to see someone in, in front of you that says, I need this variance because I have to make money off this property, or I have to save money. That is technically not one of the things that you're looking at. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by the owner of the property. That is typically the, I need this variance because I want it. I want a bigger garage. Your garages are too small. I want a bigger garage. Well, that has nothing to do with the size of your lot, that has nothing to do with the uniqueness. If you just want something, that typically is not a, a good justification for it. Now, we have seen where someone says, well, I have three dilapidated small garages, and I'm used to having a lot of storage, and I'm willing to rectify removing all of these, but I'd really like a, a bit bigger garage. That might be warranted because they're improving condition, they're showing that they're, that they were excessive in what they had to begin with, and they're trying to remedy it. That is up for decision. Finally, I think two more, the, granting the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or, or hurt other properties. So you'll hear folks say, you know, will, will it have a negative impact on your neighbors? So that is something that can be subjective, but there shouldn't be any detrimental, detrimental effects to your neighbors. And then finally, that the variation will not impair adequate supply of light and air, substantially increase the congestion on the public streets, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values. So basically, is the request going to have a, kind of a cascade effect or a negative effect on other properties? And the last line on there, substantially diminish or impair the property values. You will hear a lot of folks that come before you, especially if they're in opposition to something, this will hurt my property value. Now, that's hard to grasp. Will it truly hurt your property value? And we're not experts in property value by any means, so obviously, you make your best decision based on that. Do you really think that granting of a variance will harm someone else's property value? So going through those, and I'll ask if anyone has questions, but we'll use an example, and maybe that, that'll flush out some of the questions.
I would, I would propose an example of something we've approved numerous times, six-foot fences along 55th Street. If you're saying that all three of these, it can't yield a reasonable return, it's a unique circumstance, and the other won't alter the essential character, but if, if all three of those need to be met, is, is the need for a six-foot fence rather than a five-foot fence along 55th Street a unique circumstance?
It's hard to judge based, without the example in front of you. And the example we have is not on 55th, but it is a six-foot fence question, and I specifically chose it because it has not come to you before, and there are different ways of looking at it. So maybe, once we go through it, it might be easier to answer that. But you're not incorrect. There are several properties along 55th that are similar. However, if I was on the side of arguing for a fence variance, I would say, you know what, though, but there may be other properties on 55th that are similar like this, but I would argue that all of us have the right to a rear yard that is private, and you are stripping me of my right to privacy in my backyard, and you are trying to take a substantial portion of my, my backyard away from me by saying I should move my fence much closer, you know, mu- much further into my, my backyard.
And, and they can argue that. There's a number of residential properties on 55th Street which are different than most residential properties throughout the remainder of town, which don't have their backyards abutting a major thoroughfare.
Yes. And, and I will highlight one piece of our code with this example that actually says that, our code actually states that, that corner lots, which those are all corner lots because the, they're on a corner and their side yard is on 55th. Our code actually says that corner lots should be wider than other lots, basically to afford a, still a usable backyard while you're still increasing setbacks for that property. But unfortunately, because of the way that Westmont developed, most of those lots along 55th are not wider than the rest of the lots. So those lots really don't even conform to what we would want as a, a quarter lot, so.
Joe, would it, would it have any variance if, if say somebody on 55th, we'll stay right on 55th, that, you know, they've lived in that house 40 years, and when they moved here, it was a two-lane road, and, and now they want to cut off from that traffic versus, say, I buy that house today and, and want that fence because there's traffic there. Well, hey, I knew, I knew, I knew 55th was what it was when I bought it. Is that a difference, or, or should they both be looked at the same?
My best non-legal answer is I don't see the difference. I, I do, I, I think that even if you bought that house today, the, the, yes, you bought what was there, but the general idea that over time 55th has gotten wider and wider and wider, I think is relevant whether you're a new occupant or a lifelong occupant. Now, whether you choose to discount that and say, well, you know what, knew what you were buying, and for that reason, I don't feel you meet this unique condition, you bought the unique condition, you knew what you were buying, that would be the way you see it, and that would warrant, you know, a negative recommendation if that's the way you saw it. And I guess I will state, I am never offended when I have a mixed review up here. I am just a facilitator to get something in front of you. So whether you're for or against something, I'm indifferent about. So if I've got one person that sees it one way and feels strongly about it, I'm not offended. I like the dialogue. I, I think that, you know, independent thought is what we're all here for, that's why it's a, it's a commission and a panel and multiple votes. So you could absolutely feel strongly about, well, if you bought that, I, I see that differently than if you lived there for a long, lifelong reason.
My only comment dovetailing on what you said is, is just be consistent. So try and treat similar requests for variance the same way each time. Each property is unique, so you can take it on a case-by-case basis, but if you have a feeling that, you know, this is a self-created hardship and you're going to deny a variance, if someone else comes in with very similar circumstances, you should, you know, be consistent as opposed to, oh, they seem like a really nice family, I'm going to grant the variance for them, but not for someone else who I've never seen before, or there are a lot of people in the audience screaming at me to deny the variance, but I previously approved a variance for a very similar situation. It shouldn't matter that there are a lot of people out there arguing, unless they can make a compelling case based on the standards.
Yes. Every, every decision make sets precedent. So if, if it is not unique, if it can be kind of applied in multiple situations, then you've set precedent that you've done it in the past. And I think what Jay's, or what John is saying is, is make sure you can say it's unique before you say it's warranted for a variance, so.
Could you give us a, an idea of what is, what are the most common request for variances? Fences, side yard setback, front, front yard setback? Where are the, most of the variations, request for variances coming from?
I haven't pulled the numbers, but I would say setbacks are, are probably one of the first. Corner yards are always, always difficult to navigate because they basically have two front yards. So I see, I think we see a lot of setback variations that come before us on corner lots. If you remember, and I'm testing your memory now, if you remember, I came with a text amendment probably six years ago that basically said, we're, we're getting all these, these front yard setback variance requests in the older neighborhoods for, because most of the older neighborhoods, the houses sit much closer to the street, and we're telling all these new, new houses, they need to be 35 feet back. You, you can drive down, you can drive down Lincoln and, you can tell the new houses because they sit farther back than the old houses. And, and so when we get repetitive requests for the same type of variance, then we, then staff goes back and says, maybe our code isn't right. And so if you remember, I created an, an exception that said, well, if there's precedent on either side of you, so if one of the houses is sitting at 25 feet, we'll let you build your new house at 25 feet because it matches the character of the neighborhood. So in that case, we said, it's not unique, these requests coming before us are not unique. Everyone's saying, well, my neighbor is closer and my other neighbor is closer, why are you telling me to be further back? Staff recognizes repeated requests and then reexamines our code. After setbacks, I would say, and setbacks apply not just to building, but to parking lots. I would say that, that fences in general seem, seem to be a fairly typical request. When someone comes with a, a request for a variance for a garage, staff is pretty consistent at trying to make everyone meet the code, and, and so that, you know, that the requests that do come before us truly are unique. We, the staff always tries to guide a petitioner in, in figuring out if they are really unique or if they were really just asking for something they want, so.
An example also, you know, we talked about residential setbacks, but we, you do get a lot of requests for commercial variances for setbacks, particularly, I'm thinking, Ogden Avenue in the front yard, they want to have parking on the front yard, and they can establish that virtually every lot up and down Ogden Avenue has a parking encroachment into their front yard, and maybe it's not that they're asking for something extraordinary, it's that the code, which has a supplemental setback from Ogden Avenue, isn't what it should be, and it should be looked at and revised.
Yeah.
By the way, the, the last one we had on 55th Street was probably over a year ago, and nothing was ever done after they were, received the, the variation.
It's always interesting to be driving around Westmont, and you go buy a property. Oh, I remember, you know, two years ago, they requested, you know, to build a new garage or something. Nothing's done. We approved this, and it, nothing ever happened.
This is a wrap-up statement, but I'll say it now. I encourage every one of you, not just for variances, for special uses, for site plan approvals, go visit the sites after they're built, because you may have been on the fence about a setback request, and you may have said, yes. Go out and look at it, and, and scratch your head and say, did we make the right decision? Because you might feel differently once it's constructed. Okay, so I'm going to go in toward-
I think that's one of the things that we should all have in the back of our mind in every issue that comes before us, is that 20 years from now, you know, was that the right decision? Is somebody going to say, who the heck approved that? And, and now we're stuck with something that, who were those guys?
And staff, staff does the same thing, so I was here when the Holiday Project, you know, was approved. You can count that once it's done, I will be over there assessing the good and the bad. So I encourage everyone to do that. The thing is, we all learn from our mistakes, so.
In the early 2000s, we had so many teardowns, and so we held tight to the further setbacks, saying that eventually, that's the way it's all going to be. And then that stopped, and so now you've got one here, and the rest are here. But it didn't happen in the way that we anticipated it would because it was going like crazy. But then again, it didn't.
It's, I, I think development changes over time, and, you know, the constraints on code changes over time.
Yeah.
And, and when we did look at that setback, I was, I, I made a, a clear distinction that, that if the neighborhood- the neighborhood supported it, then it's different than in Oakwood where all the houses are setback. And as a planner, I have a strong, I have a strong connection to what's considered a traditional neighborhood. Traditional neighborhoods tend to have porches that are closer to the street, you get to know your neighbor, they're typically alley-loaded, your garages tend to be in the back. These areas right near Village Hall, I would consider traditional neighborhoods, and by telling everyone to push their house further back, you're basically telling them, I don't want you to be out on your porch and yell hello to your neighbor, because you're farther away. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of planning theory into when I craft text amendments, so I never take them too lightly, so. Okay, so we're going to give you a quick example, and you're either, I'll see it as a slam dunk, or we can easily dissect it to maybe it's not a clear-cut case. So first off, I want to introduce Scott Williams. Scott Williams is our new planner. He's been on since February. You've seen him lurking around at a couple of meetings, but I figured I would put him on the podium, so he can at least bring us some information on the examples.
Hello. Dennis, can you put on the projector for me? If you can hear me? Maybe?
Daddy.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm the petitioner in this case. So I'm here to request a variance to allow a solid six-foot fence and a side yard setback. As you can see here, this is our existing fence, nice six-foot privacy fence, and then if I flip to the aerial, you can see this is where the fence would be that I'm proposing. This is the patio, and in that patio, I use every night after work. And staff is currently telling me that I cannot replicate the existing fence, I have to set it back to 15 feet. So this is the 15, the red line is the 15 feet of where staff is telling me I need to put it, based on the code. And I'm requesting that the height, or for my fence to be at six feet where it currently is, with a height of six feet. Do you want me to go through the finding of facts?
So what I tell all petitioners, so obviously, they give us a written response to the findings of fact, I ask all petitioners in their dialogue to at least touch on those three things, so that you can hear verbally from them why they feel they're unique, why they feel it's warranted.
So I'll just list them out. So for criteria one, the property is in question, cannot yield a reasonable return and permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations and district in which it's located. I feel I'm unable to properly utilize the patio space with a fence that is 15 feet from the property line, rather than my current six feet, as it would cut my patio in half. For criteria two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. So as you can see in this plight of survey, my lot is 46, 46 feet, rather than the normal 60 feet, and it's also on a corner. And for criteria three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. My neighbor to the east has the exact same fence as I do, in the same spot.
Okay, so we gave you a condensed version, so I'm going to elaborate on a few things. It's pretty typical when we have someone that has an older property, that they may not meet current codes. So it's very typical when someone comes in and says, I'd like to rebuild my fence. So in this case, the petitioner has a fence that's there, and they've used and enjoyed that fence, and they've used and enjoyed the area behind that fence. That's going to be really hard to read, so if you want to put back up the picture, that's fine, yeah. But basically, the petitioner is saying that they use and enjoy that area between the house and the garage, that's where their patio is. So it's pretty typical that staff says, well, wait a minute, our codes say that if you're going to take the fence down, you can't rebuild it. And they, the property owner never likes to hear that, and they, the first response is, what do I have to do to get this? So a lot of times, what comes before you is someone that's a little bit angry at us because they can't have what they've always had, because we don't have an exception in the code to say that you can just rebuild it. We'll let them repair it all day long, but soon as you say you want to replace it, then you lose your, what's called the non-conforming status. So whether you're tearing down a house that has a setback that couldn't be met today, or whether you're tearing down a fence, we don't let someone automatically rebuild it. So in this case, we told the petitioner, you can't have it at six feet to the property line, you need to move it to 15 feet. And they said, well, wait a minute, I'm losing most of my back patio. And we said, well, do you feel that makes you unique? And so that's what they brought before us. So staff usually does its due diligence to do a staff report for you. So I will verbally tell you some of the things about this lot. So the first question is, is this a standard lot in the village? So our minimum lot size for this zoning district is 7,800 square feet. This lot is 6,200 square feet. So this property owner already has a lot size that's smaller than normal. So it's going to be hard for them to fit all their activities on their lot. The next is, we have a minimum lot width of 60 feet. You heard Scott say that it's 46 feet wide, and 60 feet is the norm. Actually, when you dive into our code, it says that corner lots should be designed to be 20% wider, or 72 feet. And the reason that they should be wider is to accommodate increased setback requirements on the corner lot. This obviously was not designed to be 72 feet wide. So it's deficient in lot size, it's deficient in lot width. So does that, is that enough for you to make you decide that this is a unique request? So I will open that up to members of the commission. How do you feel initially about this request? Do you feel it meets those three tests, that it's unique, that it doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood? And I'll reiterate what Scott said, the house immediately to the west of this, which would be on the, I guess, on the left-hand side, has the exact same fence. So that house back there has an exact same fence. So is there precedent in the neighborhood? Is there consistency in the neighborhood? Is one house enough for you to feel it's consistent, and it doesn't alter the character? So let's talk about this as if we were turning to the commissioners to give our initial comments.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Peterson. What do you think? Have any questions, comments?
Put the new kid on the spot.
There's no wrong answer, so.
I would generally tend to let them to approve it.
So what I'm hearing you say is you feel that it's unique, you feel that, so let me go back to my three things. So can I yield a reasonable return? So basically, can the person use and enjoy their lot like everyone else does without the variance? Or is it reasonable to say that they should be able, in this case, to use and enjoy that patio area directly behind the house? So you're saying that if you generally feel you could be for this, you're saying they can't use their lot like everyone else can, that it does seem unique, and that it's not going to alter the character of the neighborhood?
Well, especially altering the character of the neighborhood, because they already have a fence there, right? They just want to replace it.
Well, I think that's the first, is they're not creating a new condition, they're duplicating a condition that's there. So even if the neighbor didn't have the same condition, what I'm hearing you say is that they're not really changing anything. And if I water down anyone's thoughts, and I'm doing it wrong, just tell me, so. I have the luxury tonight to give my thoughts, whereas usually I sit here pretty silent, so.
But that's good, you know, when we get called on, here's three things we can ask ourselves, and apply these like you just.
What I'm trying to do is so that if you feel differently, and you don't, you don't feel that it meets the conditions, what do you hang your hat on? You hang your hat on one of these few things. So if you, if, I'll use the example, one of the things down here was, you know, someone's just trying to make money, you know, and that's what makes you feel unsettled, and then that's what you should state as what your objection is. It feels like you're just trying to make money, or it feels like you created this condition yourself. The lot didn't create the condition, you did. So if you do feel that you have an objection, where do you place your objection? And you place your objection in the standards and criteria for approval. So then I'll play the opposite. I believe they still have plenty of use and enjoyment of the backyard. The issue here is, is that their backyard is on the other side of the garage, and I think they could still have a usable backyard, they just seem to be sad that they're losing most of their patio. So would I be warranted in saying, I don't think you're unique, I think you have plenty of usable space in your backyard? It's just inconvenient, because it's on the other side of the garage, and to use Commissioner Barry's example, you bought this, you know, you knew what you were buying. And I feel strongly that way. I think I could still warrant my objection, because I see it that way, that I still think you have plenty of backyard, it's just, I'm sorry that your garage is so close to your house, I don't think that's unique enough for me. So even though I think a general consensus is, this variance probably meets most of the conditions, I'm not wrong for seeing it differently, or at least I feel I'm not wrong.
Commissioner Van Buren disagrees with you.
Okay, that's fine.
The patio has a completely different use from the general, the yard. Patio has a specific use for which they're using it to eat on, to whatever, which they can't or normally wouldn't be doing in the backyard.
I invite that kind of discussion, because although I was representing myself as if I was on the commission, a neighbor could come in and say, I think they can use their backyard just the way I described it. And if you feel that you need to justify your position, what you were doing is, you found a justification as to why you feel that way, and I think that's completely warranted. And that's why I deliberately chose an opposite position, because that could be a neighbor coming in to say, I'm against this, that could be 50 neighbors coming in to say, I'm against this. And if you still feel strongly and feel like you wanted to make that statement, that, well, what everyone's missing is that a patio is different than the backyard. And I feel that this person is warranted the use and enjoyment of this narrow patio area, and that is what makes this unique. I think you're perfectly warranted in saying that, and I appreciate you objecting with me.
I think maybe he could have found a way to repair that fence with new materials.
Well, to that point, what does, you know, say it gets shot down, can he go and change posts, and can he change 75% of those bad boards and repaint it, and live with his existing? Or what, I guess, what constitutes repairing or replacing?
Basically, the code says if, if the structure, now, structure on a house is real easy to determine, structure on a fence is usually the posts and the rails, is damaged or removed more than 50%.
50%, okay.
So if a tornado came through and took down all of his fence, and he said, I want to rebuild it, we'd say it was more than 50% destroyed. If you want to rebuild it in the same place, you'd need to get a variance. If the wind blew down a panel and it was less than 50%, we would let him repair and replace it.
Would storm damage constitute getting it to be rebuilt as it was, just like now?
It's still that 50% rule. It's if it is damaged, destroyed, or removed more than 50%, then you cannot rebuild it, it's not in accordance with the code. Because the proposal here is, I want to remove it all, because my posts have rotted, I need to replace my posts, I need to replace structure, and I need to replace all of it. That is the trigger to say, wait a minute, that's more than 50%, you need to replace it now, or you need to get a variance if you want it.
Comment, Craig?
All right, so I know that this, my fence is this fence here, all right? So I know I have to do it less than 50% this year, and next, 75% or another 25% next year, and do it incrementally, I'm fine.
I will just say.
That's a question mark.
I will just say that the code is silent as to time period, and you are not the first to think of that.
Right.
And luckily, I'm not in charge of permitting, which would be looking critically at that.
Right.
So there are loopholes in the code, and I won't acknowledge if that gets you what you want or not. How's that?
You gotta call the hardware store.
You're always just repairing, that's the thing.
Okay, so that's a very, anyone want to get more elaboration on a variance request? Basically, you can view it differently, you can change your opinion midstream, based on what you hear that's brought before you, based on your own reasoning, and I think Wally gave a very good example of, well, is anyone looking at this, the backyard and patio are different? And so let's say Commissioner Lavoy was very adamant against it, and you said that, and there's nothing wrong with you saying, wait a minute, I see this in a different light now. That's why we have discussion and dialogue, because.
That actually happens quite a bit.
And that's why you could, you can go and read a staff report and say, I know exactly how I feel about this, only to walk away going, I did not see that coming, because I can see it differently now. So that's the purpose of a public hearing, that's the purpose of hearing the neighbors, that's the purpose of what we do, is you can change your opinion, you just still have to be able to say, I feel it meets all my conditions to say yes. Okay, we're going later than I thought we would, so I'm going to move on to special uses. Okay, so the other thing you come, see come before you is a very different request. So obviously, variances, for the most part, are related to what we consider bulk. Bulk is height, setback, size, things you can really quantify. Special uses are very different, it is a request for a use, and that is usually a business, that is usually something that is specific to how they operate. What I usually, what I usually tell folks is that when you approach the village and you say you have a use, and a use could be a residential building, you know, but usually most of these questions come into light with commercial properties. We usually have what's considered permitted uses, special uses, and when it's not listed, it means it's not allowed. So when you come in and you figure out, well, I'm in a B1 district, I'm in the downtown district, we go to a list and we say, well, is that use permitted, special, or not allowed? Sometimes we say, it's not allowed, so sad, find a different district to be located in. Sometimes it's listed as permitted. Permitted means they don't have to come through planning and zoning, it means that we've established that that use is what we want in that district. A good example is retail. If you're a retail use, retail is a permitted use in most of the business districts, you just have to get a business license, if you want to do construction, you need to get a building permit, you don't see those come through planning and zoning. But then there's this subcategory of special uses, and those are what I like to say, basically say, it might be okay, but we need to know your specific location. say, basically say, it might be okay, but we need to know your specific location and specific details about your business. So those are special uses that come before you. We need to look at the larger picture of, is it compatible with what's around you? And then there are special use standards, and there are six standards. I'll quickly go through them, but it has to be in substantial compliance with the standards. And these are harder to grasp sometimes. These are, are more debatable sometimes. The first one is that it's not detrimental to, or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. You could say, Joe, what does comfort mean? I can't give a good answer with that, and maybe when something comes before us, it makes us uncomfortable.
Roosters crowing.
Exactly. The second is, will it be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property? So will that use, if you allow it, upset the neighbors, or upset the community, or upset the street? That the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development of the other properties. So if you allow a business to locate, will it be detrimental to the properties next door? So if you allow a chemical plant, will it scare away development next door because of the chemical plant? I'm using an extreme. That adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion. You will typically hear staff talk about traffic impacts, and that's where that comes from. And that, in all other respects, that the use will conform to the regulations. So are they asking for a variance on top of their special use? Will they meet all the other conditions? I think we saw come before us, Bell Tire came before us, and that was a special use in the district. And so we said, well, does it meet all the other requirements? And did it meet setbacks? Did it meet heights? Did it meet other things? And generally, it did, except for the flagpole. But basically, if there's a laundry list of variations that are needed in addition to your special use, maybe you should be saying, you're not really conforming to anything. Maybe you don't fit well where you're located. So we're going to give another simple example, and we'll look at it quickly and see how everyone feels.
Okay. So in this scenario, I am the owner of a music school, and I'm looking to locate in the downtown. I'm looking at two different properties currently. We have a single unit, one-story building, and then we have a two-story building over here.
And I'll interject this. We're using the block right next to us here.
Yes, right on.
So the large building on the corner is where we've got the Pilates studio. There's three spaces in there. It's got the coffee shop, I think the middle space is still vacant, and then it's got the Pilates studio. So a little one-story building right next to us here.
And to tell you a little bit about the business, our school offers one-on-one classes as well as small band lessons. We don't believe that there'll ever be any more than seven people within the building at a time. We have two instructors on staff, and for hours of operation, it's 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, depending on the lessons, and it's Monday through Saturday.
Okay, so I'll interject a little bit here. So one of the things we typically ask for special uses is we need to understand the operations of your business. We usually ask, how many employees do you have? What are your hours of operation? Such like that. So I'll give you an example. Drive-throughs usually have speakers, those are special uses. And if they're near residential, you kind of want to know how late they're going to be open, because the adjacent neighbors might hear something at 1:00 AM if Taco Bell is open till 1:00, whereas if they closed at, at 10:00 PM, it might not be a big deal to you if it's only noisy till 10:00. So we usually ask a special use to give us a little bit of information about the operation of the business. So what you heard Scott say is, he has a music story, or a music school, he has music lessons. And he said, well, I only have two employees. Generally, it's one-on-one instruction, but sometimes we could have a band in there, so, you know, up to seven. And then we operate Monday through Friday, I think you said, but usually till like 10:00 PM. So on the surface, at least for me, that doesn't sound like there's anything initially objectionable, but we'll dive into a little bit more. So the first thing, is staff always has to look at the use and say, are you really a school? Because he said he was a, I think he said he were a music school. Because schools are very different than training centers or other types of instructional things. Schools tend to imply something, you know, like a, a public school. This is not a public school. This is not a lot of, lot of students coming at the same time. There are not buses. So the first thing we do is we say, well, actually, you know what? We read our code, and I have what's called a performing arts studio. And while you may not think you're a performing arts studio, my code says, it's an established, an established housing, a school, or instructional facilities for dancing, music, both instrumental and voice, drama, and stagecraft. It says, this shall not include use for performances given in the, given to the public. So basically, it's not a performance, it's not a theater. And so staff says, first, you're not a school to us, you're a performing arts studio, because clearly it talks about instructional facilities for music, instrumental and voice. And why is that important? Because a school might have a laundry list of additional requirements to prove to the, the commission, whereas a performing arts studio, in this case, has a much more limited scope. So we first make sure we're, we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges. So in this case, in addition to those six special use considerations I, I went over, this use has one more consideration. You will always see us write that in the staff report. In this case, it says that there should be no appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. So in addition to all those other six things that it's not detrimental to the surroundings, it says, traffic congestion and pedestrian safety are important. So prove to us that that's not going to be an issue. Now, in this case, I don't know that the applicant needs to prove that to us. He indicated two staffers at the most, seven people. So at least in my opinion, it doesn't seem like this use causes traffic congestion. Just as an example, we have many dance studios in the downtown. Those are special uses. If you remember when Expression Dance Studio located, moved from over here to over there, traffic was a big contentious discussion because when they had a class of 30, 40, or 50 people, this was pre-COVID when you could have large gatherings, the pickup and drop-off was a big deal. So we asked them for a plan of how are you dropping people off? What are the hours of your classes? Does it clash with, you know, when, when traffic is really bad? So in that case, traffic was very important to consider. Now, if you felt traffic on this case was important, you have every right to make a big deal about it and ask for more information.
So what about a situation like that one, Joe? Like, Expressions is a perfect example of the traffic being that, and they kind of lied to us because the, the traffic is horrific there, and, and they're dropping off on the left side, they're dropping off, and, and it doesn't seem like there's any enforcement of what was, from this group to the village board was so important, it seems like that's completely ignored today. So, so what, what happens in a situation like that?
Well, I'm sure John will interject when I'm speaking, but when you grant a special use, there are rights that we have to revoke a special use.
Sure.
Now, it's the board's discretion to revoke a special use, and I would, I would imagine that based on complaints and based on it not really operating the way that it was supposed to operate. And I would, I would assume that, you know, we do want to try to, to salvage the business and see if operations could be amended to be something better. But ultimately, a special use can be revoked if it is not operating in the way that it's supposed to. Now, if the board wants to take those steps, that is not our discretion as the commission, unless I'm stating that wrong, John.
A little bit, partially right, partially wrong.
Okay. I don't mind being wrong, by the way.
It's okay. If a special use is granted for a particular use, and they're doing something different than what they said, then they're not, the board would have a right to revoke the special use because they're operating differently as to the use itself. Parking and traffic is an ancillary issue to the special use for a dance studio, so you can't just revoke a special use because the use is generating more traffic than they let on. And you said they lied, but maybe they just underestimated how they would handle it, and they're wildly successful, and they're not addressing it the way we'd like. What we can do, what this commission can recommend and what the village board can impose in, in a special use ordinance, is special conditions, and that can address things like traffic concerns. So you can say, all pickup and drop-off must be on, you know, the side street. No pickup, drop-off on Cass Avenue. And a violation of this can be grounds to revoke the special use or permit. And we've done that in many cases. Sometimes we say, you know, three violations within a year or four violations total are grounds to revoke it. And usually, we say, you have to come before the village board and have a, a public hearing so that the applicant has the right to state their case, and it's not just randomly being revoked. But otherwise, just because a use is having more adverse impacts than you anticipated isn't grounds for revoking a special use. Once it's granted, they've got property rights.
And so what, what I want to elaborate on what John mentioned was special conditions. Sometimes special conditions are something we impose on everything. So you're always, a lot of times for the dealerships, you see, see John tack on special conditions that we do with all the dealers. Basically, no balloons, don't elevate the, the, the cars on those racks, don't have loud speakers to announce, you know, that someone's, you know, there to see a car. Those are kind of universals that we always tack on to certain special uses. And then we had a special use, I think it was just before you came on, where McGrath wanted to use the old Chevy dealership to put a body shop in there, and because historically we've had issues with them storing boats and campers and other things that shouldn't ever be on the property, we, the staff recommended a special condition to say, well, the only thing stored on that property should be inventory and cars awaiting body shop. None of this other stuff. So basically, we were trying to remedy problems with the past. It doesn't mean that if staff doesn't recommend something, or if we don't have typical conditions that we put on certain uses, that through discussion, or that any one of the commissioners here can't say, well, I'd like to amend the motion to add a special condition. So we'll use your example. If another dance studio was coming before this, you know what? We, we learned our lesson with the last dance studio that was on Cass Avenue. I'd like to impose a special condition. That pickup and drop-off only occurs during certain times and in certain places. And can we, can we amend a special condition? Now, whether that's supported by everyone here or not, that's up for debate, but you are, you can always institute a special condition as, as an amended motion.
I'll chime on, chime in also, the, Joe mentioned, I think, the six conditions that you guys consider with a special use permit, and, and those are commonly found in zoning ordinances of many communities. The Illinois Supreme Court, it was a case called Living Word, said, when evaluating a special use, by classifying a particular use as a special use, you're essentially saying it's permitted, but in that zoning district, but because it might have unique or adverse impacts, the real question is, will this use at this particular location within the district have unique or adverse impacts compared to this use being located somewhere else within the zoning district? So let's say a gas station wanted to come in on a corner of a busy commercial intersection, that's pretty typical, but if they wanted to be on a more interior location, even though it's still on a commercial street, but they're surrounded by residences on three sides or two, at least two sides, you might state that at this particular location, you don't want a gas station there.
And what I will advise is staff does its very best to alert the petitioner to what we feel are going to be the concerns on a special use. We don't have a set list. So on the example tonight, I wouldn't have said to the petitioner, I need a traffic study. I don't know that I would have requested it for, for the dance studio, because first off, a traffic study for a dance studio is probably pretty hard to quantify. However, a traffic study for Burger King might be easy and, and, so if I anticipate that there will be dialogue about how much traffic there is, then I typically tell the petitioner, I want a traffic study. But there may be cases where I told them, I don't think traffic's an issue at all, I don't think you need to provide one. And if you feel that a traffic study should have been done, you have every right to say, hey, staff, where's the traffic study? And I will say, we didn't require one in this case. And if you feel like a traffic study should have been performed, you have the right to say, I'd like to amend, you know, basically, I'd like to ask why there's not a traffic study, and if everyone on this commission feels that a traffic study is warranted, then you continue the case. Tell the, the petitioner, bring this back to us when you have the traffic study. So there are going to be things that I don't assess as important to you or to the public, or it might take the neighbor to come out and say, listen, you guys didn't realize that this has been an issue for years, and this is going to exacerbate it, that we say, well, you know what? We need more information from the petitioner. So staff does its best, but we're, we're, we can make mistakes as well. So I usually try to get a traffic study for those things that we deem as important, but it doesn't mean I'm going to catch it in every case. Or sometimes the petitioner will say, we don't want to perform a traffic study, we'd like to be heard by the commission. And, and in that case, you know, they're just saying, we want to trudge forward with limited information and see how it's received. So. So the case that's before us, the first building they're looking at is this one-story building. So does anyone perceive an issue with the special use that's before us? And if no one catches what I, I want you to catch, then I will bring it up.
I see a tree, but I'm not sure.
There's no construction outside, so we're safe.
I would, I would question the petitioner a little bit to get a little more fact related to the impact of the parking, because if there's seven people in just a dance studio, what other uses are in that building? And how is that parking that's limited there going to impact the other businesses there? And how much parking does that applicant feel that they're going to take up at one time? Because potentially, if you have seven every hour, that means that at one point or another in transition, you're going to have 14 parking spaces eaten up by this one particular dance studio with limited parking for the other businesses. So I would be quizzing them pretty heavily on that matter.
And that, thank you for bringing that up, and I will discount it, but that's because the code discounts it. So there was a text amendment that occurred a few years ago that basically said, in the downtown, in the B1, no one needs to provide parking for uses that are either permitted or special uses. So basically, we removed all the parking requirements for businesses in the downtown. Now.
Yeah, I get, I get that.
And prior, prior to that, we could have grilled them on it. It's still a valid topic to discuss. And if this were in the B2 district, and there was not enough parking, then we would, we could still, there is no exception for the parking. So I, and, and John can correct me, I think it's still a discussion topic, but I don't know that you could warrant a negative recommendation. Or can someone still say, I, I'm against this because there is no parking? Or did, when we removed the parking standards in the downtown, does that remove the consideration?
I think it becomes harder, but if there is a, let's say, unusual amount of parking demand that a use is going to create beyond a normal downtown business that, that you guys allow, I think you can, that can be one factor.
Okay.
So it, it's, when I look at that site plan, that's what I saw, is I counted the cars, the spaces, and I'm looking at the number of people that you're going to have coming in and out of there, plus what impact, and I don't, we haven't even talked about if there's any other objections. We haven't even talked about if there's any other objections, but that would certainly be an impact.
But remember, it's not just the spaces right out in front. You have to look at the downtown parking holistically.
At the bigger area, right.
And is there commuter parking across the street that opens up in the evening for the public? Is there parking up the street that's available, et cetera?
Understood.
Yeah. That would be the thing with the seven to 10, this whole lot here is pretty wide open. To me, I guess the biggest concern would become the sound.
That, okay.
You know-
Sound attenuation for the residents that are there.
Behind, right?
Exactly. So I'm glad you brought up sound. That's what I wanted to bring up. So that comes into the comfort, enjoyment, the detriment to the adjacent properties. I think sound is important. Sound is hard to grasp in this situation. So questions on, "Well, how are you attenuating sound?" Or, "In your current location, do you ever have sound issues?" It's hard to quantify. Now, we do have general rules and regulations for noise, but it's also hard to enforce. So in this situation, I think sound is relevant, but maybe you can discount it. And that's why, if you can put up a picture of the next building, I wanted to say, "Well, what if they were looking at the old newsstand, I think is what we used to call that building." Now you have people living upstairs.
Right upstairs, yeah.
So let's say you were okay with the first location because no one was living upstairs. Now maybe the person that lives behind the space may have concerns, but it, there is that small parking area, there is the alley, it's a little bit further away. So maybe you could discount noise in the first scenario, but would you feel the same way if people lived upstairs? And in that case, would you say, "Well, no. Whereas I was okay with the first location, I'm not okay with the second location." And that's why special uses have to look at the location specifically, because you might feel differently based on the location. It's the exact same use, it's just two doors down, but the situation has completely changed. And it is for you to feel satisfied with the petitioner's response in terms of sound. So I think Expression, that's a good example. I think they used kind of the egg crate foam in the ceiling. And I think we asked for that when they moved into this, and actually, I think they were at 21, which was that vacant space that's there. I think we asked for that when they moved in there because the commission at the time had general concerns about noise. And they said, "Well, with that number of people in there and the amount of noise they're going to generate, we can put something in the ceiling that will try to curb it." Now, if they were still really noisy, you know, it's kind of similar to the pickup-drop-off. It's like, "Well, you told us you'd try to address the sound. You really didn't address the sound well. And we learn from our mistakes." So, yeah, that's, thank you. Not that parking's not an issue. I think parking's always an issue.
Yeah, I would have talked about sound attenuation.
And for me, the big issue on this is sound. Something like Expression Dance Studio, it might be sound and traffic and parking. So those are what you're considering for a special use. Any more questions on that one? Okay. The other ones are much easier to get through, although we can talk about them as much as you want to. So those first two had very specific standards that you measure things with. These other things are a little bit more ungraspable. The first are amendments, and I kind of grouped these all together because you see amendments for map amendments, which is a rezoning. You see amendments to our text. So basically, we want to change our code. And you see amendments to the comprehensive plan. So those are three types of amendments you see come before you. And they're not listed standards for any one of them, but actually, and hopefully John says I pulled this from the right section, but there is purpose and intent in the zoning code. And don't get misled where it says that the comprehensive amendment is adopted to the end that comprehensive amendment does not necessarily mean comprehensive plan. It just means an amendment to what we have. And you're measuring that adequate natural light, privacy, convenience of access to property, and other dangers that everything is secured there, that you're not doing something that talks about overcrowding of land, that there's not an undue concentration of population, that the value of land instructions throughout the village is conserved, congestion in the public streets and highways is lessened or avoided, hazards to persons and property damage from the accumulation of stormwater runoff. So basically, we place a high priority on stormwater here, that the aesthetic values throughout the village are preserved, the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and convenience and general welfare may otherwise be promoted. So these are harder to quantify. You'll hear us talk on a rezoning about things like, is it spot zoning? So we always try to say, "Well, is it comparable to what's around it? So is there a similar zoning nearby? And is it matching what's similar?" So we're doing our best to try to quantify what the change is before us. In rezonings, we usually then use our guiding document or comprehensive plan to say, "What does the comprehensive plan say?" And I think that's why the Hilton project is so hard to grasp, because the comprehensive plan says one thing, and they're asking for a zoning to something else. So that puts us in uncharted territory in terms of, we don't have a guide to tell us what right and wrong is. But amendments don't have a list of standards that you have to pass a test in order to do. It's best judgment based on good practices. The other thing you see come before you is land development. And land development is basically subdivisions. Subdivisions encompass many things. It can be a consolidation of lots. It could be taking one lot and turning it into multiple lots. It can be dedication of right-of-way, so basically, taking a piece of land and putting it into public use. It could be easements, a plot of easement. But many different types of land development things come before us, and that invokes what we call subdivision standards. The first thing I want to note is, we call things preliminary plats and final plats. The code actually calls it a preliminary plan and a final plat. And Planning and Zoning Commission reviews a preliminary plan. Although we sometimes call it a plat, it's a preliminary plan. And then provided the preliminary plan is approved, when it goes to the board, the board approves a final plat based on the preliminary plan. And why do we use a preliminary plan? You'll hear me talk a lot on site development projects or on subdivisions about, "We want to lock in the design. We want to know where the building sits. We want to know where the parking lot sits. We want to know how many parking spaces are in that parking lot. And we want to know that it can be built. We don't want you to show us one thing and then go to construction and say, 'You know what? We're sorry, we promised a detention pond as big as a football field. We can't do that. We need to change.'" So we require a minimum of information to lock in that preliminary plan. And the general translation in Westmont is, "Give us some preliminary engineering." Because a lot of what we do here is driven by stormwater. It's driven by engineering. So we need to at least know that the engineering is logical so that the plan that's derived from that makes sense. Now in subdivisions, our codes are very specific to say, "If you're subdividing, we can give you a laundry list of things that we need." That can be stormwater. So you see, even on a two-lot split, that's why you see some sort of detention area, because DuPage County, and Westmont operates under DuPage County rules, it says, "If you're splitting lots, you need to accommodate stormwater in some way." So that's why even on something as simple as a two-lot split for houses, you see some sort of stormwater. But it also invokes other things such as curbs, sidewalks, streetlights. If the road is substandard, they might have to widen the road. Basically, we place all the costs of development on that subdivision if the roads are not improved. So sometimes you'll see in the southeast of town where it's mostly ditches and culverts and new sidewalks, sometimes you'll see that we want sidewalks. Sometimes you'll see that we anticipate sidewalks and we want cash-in lieu. So when we're ready to build sidewalks, we've got the money up front to build them. But those subdivisions are what invoke a lot of those standards. What muddies our waters here is Planning and Zoning is not approving the sidewalks. It's, what we are approving is the lot size. Does it meet our minimum lot requirements? And does it generally conform to what the engineers are telling us need to be there? And is it a logical plan? Sometimes we get entrenched in some of the details that are for permitting. It's okay to have those discussions, but you're going to see over time, I'm trying to get to more of the bigger picture items. We're not approving the plans other than the site plan or the subdivision. So I know in the past, on a two-lot split, we liked to see the footprints of the houses. Or sometimes they even show you what the houses are going to look like. There is no obligation for them to show you what the houses look like. It's nice if we know what they look like. It's nice to know where the driveways may be in, you know, connecting to the street. But really, we are looking at, is the subdivision meet a minimum lot size? Does it meet a minimum lot width? And can it accommodate what the engineers say is going to need to be built here? That's really what we're here for on subdivisions. So I like to say it's a lot simpler, but sometimes they throw a lot of details at us. So, you know, we kind of get entrenched in some of the details where we don't have to. So sometimes you'll ask me questions, and I'll say, "Well, that's a permitting issue." And I'm not trying to dismiss what you're saying. I'm just trying to say that I don't have a good answer for you because I'm not in permitting and I'm not an engineer and I'm not an architect. I remember when we had previous chair Greg Pill, he asked about the floor plan because you walked through the master bedroom of the house to get to the closet. And that was because the applicant showed us the house plans, but we were not here to debate the house plans. And I will always welcome questions that are head-scratchers, but I would hate if anyone made their decision because they didn't like the house plan. Any questions on subdivisions or land development? Okay. Last thing I threw on here is plan development districts. These we don't get very often. And in Westmont, it's very unique. Our plan development code is not nearly as developed in other communities. The general translation for a plan development is, "If you have multiple buildings on one lot, you need to be a plan development." Plan developments really exist in code to say, "There's something unique about your development, and if you were to abide by the strict standards of setbacks, it's just not logical for you." So if I was developing a new subdivision and most of my subdivision was a picturesque lake, and I said, "Hey, Planning and Zoning, if I abide by your minimum lot sizes and your minimum setbacks, I can't build much. I've got this huge lake and very little buildable land." So if I concentrate the development of my houses over in this corner to preserve the lake, can I do that? And the mechanism to do that is a plan development. Basically, you create a laundry list of exceptions or waivers, or you catalog variances and says, "No, there's something special about your land and your project, and rather than looking at this on a lot-by-lot basis, we're looking at it as an overall development, and we will allow you to creatively use your land." Really, that's what a plan development is. It's creative use of land. And so we typically overlay a plan development onto a property. So it has an underlying zoning. So I'll give you an example. Market Center has an underlying zoning of C1. If it were to abide by strict setbacks, none of those buildings that are there could sit so close together because they wouldn't meet the minimum setbacks on a lot-by-lot basis. So they did themselves as a plan development that allowed exceptions and creative use of that land. And the prime example to me is, if you remember, we had Freddy's coming for us a few weeks ago. And we said, "You know what? When they set up that plan development, they also set up the special use for drive-throughs on that Freddy's lot and the Raising Canes lot." Because they knew they were going to market those lots to drive-throughs, and they wanted to remove the later discussion so that they could market those lots to drive-through users. And so they needed some guarantee that a drive-through could be on those lots. So they said, "Hey, Westmont, can we secure drive-through special uses now? And we will design our project to accommodate for drive-throughs here." And so we said, "Sure." It was approved with the initial approval. And so it removed that encumbrance or that need for the individual user to come through with a drive-through request because it was a plan development. And plan developments are always unique. They can cover residential properties. They can cover commercial properties. But in general, it is, how do we get around the strict letter of the law? And how do we show you that we are trying to creatively use land that otherwise really can't be accommodated very well? So that is the end of my long, long narrative. But those are the typical things you see come before us. And sometimes on advanced projects, you will have special use on top of variance, on top of plan development, all at once. And sometimes it's overwhelming. So I dissect the project. And that's why we do line items for votes, is first, variance to a setback, is that amenable? Variance to, you know, lot covers, is that amenable? And just because you like a project, doesn't mean you have to say yes to every single one of them.
Say that again?
Just because you like a project doesn't mean you say yes to every one of the items. So if something has 10 variances, and number 10, you're like, "I just can't, I don't see how it meets the findings of fact." Well, you can have objection to one of them. You don't have, you don't look at it as an entire project and say, "Well, looking at this in whole, I think it should be approved." Or, "I like who's before me." Or, "They're very compassionate, and I feel for them." It's, well, no, we are pretty cut and dried and unemotional. Does it meet a standard? Does it meet a requirement? Does it meet a code? Because unfortunately, I really sum up my profession as, I usually tell people all day long, "No," because my laundry list of codes that people have to abide by is pretty lengthy. And I'm doing my job well as long as I can get someone to understand why I have to say "no." And they understand that they might not get what they want, but they have an understanding for the uniformity that code tries to put forth on everyone. So if I can send someone away understanding versus angry, that is what satisfies my job. I will not necessarily send people away happy, so.
Well, I think I can speak for everyone on the board here that it's been a very productive-
I guarantee the next several months, we'll have a lot of projects that test every one of you for your considerations. So we're just trying to prep you so that you don't get overwhelmed later.
And the notes that you provided, you know, are excellent guidelines as well, that I'll keep and refer to. So, well, thank you very much. And Scott and John for your input as well.
Were you going to say something? Did you raise your hand to raise?
No.
Oh, I thought, okay.
She was destroying property.
Well, if there's no more questions, I'll go through the last quick items under miscellaneous.
Okay.
Special meeting schedule. So I'm not scheduling any special meetings at this point, but we potentially have the Willow Crest Golf Course project. It is very difficult if I have any other item on one of those nights because that one petitioner gets overwhelmed with a room full of people. So if that project is to move forward, I will likely look to scheduling special meetings. I typically try to schedule them on a similar Wednesday night, 7:00 PM. And I typically try to schedule it at the midpoint between our meetings. So if we meet once a month, then I'd say two weeks from, basically, between those meetings is where I would schedule. If anyone wants to communicate with- If anyone wants to communicate with me as to serious objection, or, because the other way I look at it is I have to poll every one of you and say, "What do you think about this Tuesday? Or what about this Thursday?" And we never get a perfect date. So as long as I don't hear anyone give a strong objection that generally, if we have to have a special meeting, and nobody wants to have special meetings if they don't have to. If we have to have a special meeting, I will typically target a Wednesday midway between the Plan Commission meetings. Does anyone have an objection to that? Whenever we're scheduling special meetings, yes, we would like everyone there, but we have an understanding that sometimes you have a life outside of this organization. I just want to make sure that if we have a complex project like the Willacres Golf Course, that the room is filled with people for that case, not necessarily for other cases that either have to be heard in advance of the big case, which means that 100 people are sitting here for one little case, or they have to wait till the end, which never seems very fair either, so. And the last thing is, right now, July 18th is still our next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Right now.
13th.
13th. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses. 13th. Right now, I don't have anything definitive on the agenda. I might have one or two items that come in last minute. But right now, I'm not going to cancel it. I still anticipate having it. But if I don't have any items, since we did come in tonight when there were no items, I will look at canceling that meeting, so.
Understood. Before we adjourn, I'd like to open this up. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say or discuss or ask? Questioners? John?
No.
Scott?
I'll get it.
In which case, this meeting is adjourned. I didn't want to take the risk of a vote.